Morning, it is Tuesday, November 16th, 2021, and I'll call to order the Story County Board of Supervisors meeting. Please stand if you're able and join us in statement of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any changes to today's agenda? So if not, it's their motion to adopt today's agenda.
So moved in second, Ms. Markin.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Helen.
Aye.
Now is the time for a public comment. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. If there's anyone who'd like to make a public comment in your Zoom, please use the raise hand function so that we can unmute you. I'm not seeing anyone on Zoom or anyone in the public room come forward, so we will blow the public comment. We do have a proclamation to consider and... Vice Markin, if you'd like to start out with it.
Proclamation of Philanthropy Day, November 18th. Whereas for 16 years, the Story County Alliance for Philanthropy has created awareness of philanthropic efforts in Story County and recognized over 70 outstanding adult, youth, individuals, families, groups, and businesses throughout Story County who have exhibited outstanding financial or leadership support for many charitable causes. And whereas the purpose of proclamation is to educate the public about many examples of philanthropy that have occurred and continue to occur in Story County. And whereas the Story County Alliance for Philanthropy creates awareness of philanthropy in Story County throughout the month of November as part of National Philanthropy Month. And whereas philanthropy can have many definitions, including adult and youth, young individuals, families, groups, and businesses that volunteer donate time, effort, leadership skills, knowledge, property, or money to actively promote human welfare, to improve quality of life, which enables everyone to celebrate the extraordinary change that fundraising and philanthropy have helped to create in our world. And...
Whereas annual award categories include individual family philanthropists, business corporate foundation philanthropists, individual volunteer fundraiser, group volunteer fundraiser, and youth volunteer fundraiser. And whereas there are many organizations committed to creating awareness of and providing recognition of philanthropy in Story County, which include Planning Committee members, Abel of Iowa, Boys and Girls Club of Story County, Childsir, Friendship Arc, Good Neighbor Emergency Assistance, Iowa State Memorial Union, ISU College of Agriculture and Life Sciences, Iowa State University Foundation, Mary Greeley Medical Center Foundation, Story County Community Foundation, the Art of Story County, The Bridge Home, United Way of Story County, and Youth and Shelter Services. And...
Whereas Story County Board of Supervisors recognize the value of philanthropy in helping many individuals in Story County. Therefore, we, the Story County Board of Supervisors of Story County, do hereby proclaim November 18th, 2021, a Story County Philanthropy Day. On behalf of our community, we encourage all citizens to recognize the many philanthropic efforts of our citizens. Signed this day, the 16th day of November.
I move adoption of proclamation.
Been moved in second, Ms. Markin.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Helen.
Aye.
And I know there were a couple of people that wanted to make a couple of comments. First being Mr. Weber.
Morning, Linda, Lisa, Latifah. My name is Charlie Weber. I'm with the Story County Alliance for Philanthropy. Appreciate you taking the time to have a proclamation today. This is the, on Thursday, we'll be announcing the winners of this year's awards. It's usually five categories every year. This is the 16th annual event. There's been over 70 different individuals, groups, organizations, businesses that have been recognized over the last 16 years. I just moved to Story County a few years ago. I went to college here back in the 70s, but I just, after I retired, I moved back to Ames. And what I, as I talk to people about the Story County Alliance for Philanthropy, I don't think there's very many people that know about it. So we appreciate you lots creating this awareness activities today. In my case, I'm a volunteer board member at Good Neighbor Emergency Assistance, which will be one of the follow-ups, short speakers. But I'm also on the Story County Alliance for Philanthropy, and I volunteer there. We've had this, or the group has had this every year for 16 years. There's usually a luncheon at the gateway. There's a formal document. Last year with COVID, that didn't happen. So this year, we were all prepared to do that. Have a formal recognition luncheon until the first part of October, and then COVID started ramping up again. So what we're going to do instead is we have contracted with Monwood Studio in Town. They're, they're producing a video for us that will be part of our launch on Thursday. That and all the other information about the other 70-plus winners over the years, plus this year's five winners, six winners this year, will be on our website, storycountyphilanthropy.org, and on our Facebook page, S C A P, Story County Alliance for Philanthropy. Both of the, the website has been around for years. Facebook, talking about creating awareness, first year that we'll have a Facebook site. And one of the things I'd like to do is when we talk about philanthropy, there's 14 different sponsors that have been involved funding the activity for all of these years. Two of them, they've been around since the very beginning, 2005. The other 14 have been here most of those years, so their names are listed both on the website and on Facebook. What I'd like to do is give the opportunity to have two, there's five organizations, I believe, on Zoom today. I'd like to have the opportunity for two of them to volunteer to make some comments. Bryce, do you recognize them?
Yep.
Jennifer?
Good morning. Thank you. On behalf of the Story County Alliance for Philanthropy, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the Story County Board of Supervisors for valuing the importance of philanthropy in Story County and the impact it has on our community. I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank those who give of their time, talents, and treasures to benefit others as they exhibit the true meaning of philanthropy. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Lori?
Good morning. I'm Lori Allen, the Director of Good Neighbor Emergency Assistance, and is the Director of an organization that has the, its roots in philanthropy, where all work and funds were the collective philanthropy of individuals, service organizations, and faith communities at our beginning. Now, 24 years later, we are still fueled by this philanthropy. And we've added, besides individuals, organizations, and faith communities, the asset grant funding, state and federal, and other organizations that are equity-seeking, and foundations, and other local organizations. And so I'd really like to thank the Board of Supervisors for bringing this awareness to our county that there are so many agencies that depend on the philanthropy of others, both through their funding and through their volunteer services that they dedicate to us. And it's so important that we acknowledge the, the big impact they make, both financially and through the labor they offer, to make sure that the work that we do can be done. So again, thank you so much. We appreciate your acknowledgement of this important part of the works of our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also wanted to recognize, when Jennifer talked in the beginning, make sure that it was recognized that she's the Director at Friendship Arc. I believe there's three other, eight, three other agencies that should be on Zoom today. Jody Knox, who's with the Iowa State University Foundation. Rita Gilbertson, who's with Mary Greeley Medical Center Foundation. And Liz Zercher, who's with the Story County Foundation. One moment, Bryce, in case there's anyone else that's raised their hand. Okay, there are 14 different nonprofits that are all active. Active planning begins in April of every year and continues through the event in November. So I know you read the 14 agency names, but they are all very active. They do rely on grants, but they also rely on a lot of philanthropy to help the needy people within Story County. Any questions? Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Do you want to do the picture right now?
Charlie, would you come up here with us for a picture?
Oh, I'm too humble.
Yeah, that's the Linda, yes.
Aw, thank you. We were in an exercise class together, so...
She always update me.
Time to get back to it, Bill.
One, two, three.
Thank you.
Yeah, I did. It might still be sick. Yeah, I'll, I'll ask if there's something else that I will... All right, moving on with our agenda, we have agency reports up next. We have The Bridge Home. I'm not sure if there's somebody on from The Bridge Home to do that update today. If not, we can go on with our agenda and come back and say, come on, I know they had to reschedule for this weekend. That may be the situation that we need to extend that out as well. Okay, we'll move on. First, so for consideration of minutes, I'd like to suggest that we, first motion be for November 2nd and November 9th, and then we'll do the tier one separately.
Yes. Approval of minutes of November 7th and November 9th.
Second. Been moved in seconded, Markin.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Helen. Aye.
Then I was not at campus.
I would move approval of the campus minutes first here from November 9th.
And I will second that. Basil.
Aye.
Helen. Aye. And Markin, a state. The capital, the stuff things out of the way to get it here. All right, consideration of personnel actions.
I will approve what personnel actions is listed.
Second. Been moved in seconded, Markin.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Helen. Aye. Consent agenda, or any thing from the consent agenda in this call? No.
I will approve what consent agenda is presented.
Been moved in seconded, Basil.
Aye.
Markin.
Aye.
Helen. Aye. We have no public hearing items today, but we do have a couple additional items. First, we have discussion and consideration of capital improvement plan process and timeframe. Good morning, Leanne.
Good morning. It's actually so hard to wait. You're already mid-November. I know. I'm talking about capital improvements plan. Um, Bryce is going to bring up a couple of forms for me to share, for him to share, me to go review with the board. There was a memo that I prepared for today's agenda. Attached to that was the proposed timeframe that I've laid out for the development fiscal year '23 to '27 capital improvements plan. That really does kind of kick off today with you taking action on the proposed timeframe. And then this year, I did, I am suggesting that rather than having Excel spreadsheets or fillable PDFs, we use technology to the best that we can. And I have forms that we have built using our Civic Plus forms module. So if you could click on that form, like the first one. So this would, this link, while published live, would just be sent out to elected officials and department heads to use to submit projects. As in the past, there are two forms, one for a purchase of equipment, leases. But then the first form that is up right now is really for projects. And so it's the same information that you've seen in past years, just a different delivery format. They would then, if you can scroll to the bottom, just submit it, and it comes right to my inbox. And then I can use that then to populate everything for the board and the committee to review. But I'm actually glad to have that built because I hope it will make the process for those submitting information a little bit easier, too. As in years past, it would kick off then with really releasing all this information of the department head elected official meeting this coming Thursday. And then, give rest. And then the week of December 13th, the CIP Staff Review Committee will go over everything that's been reviewed. I tentatively scheduled a work session for the 15th of December with the board. Again, a preliminary review of projects, so that we can determine any additional information that's needed to go forward. It doesn't necessarily correlate with the budget process this year, the, the original deadline for information to be submitted. Just because I know my schedule has some other conflicts, I'd like to get the information to the board earlier than is possible. And then the schedule goes on, it looks pretty similar to how it has in past, with the actual formal adoption of CIP concurrent with the budget adoption in late March. I can go over the, or have Bryce actually look at the forms again if you want to see any more detail, but I'll be glad to answer any questions as well.
Content of the forms is basically the same, it's just that you need to use your...
Yep.
Okay. Don't need to send them. So do department heads and elected officials need to resubmit what was approved in previous years? Do they, do they need to resubmit everything?
Only if it's a modification of a project. Then they need to resubmit it. And when I, when I send out the instructions, I'll, I'll make sure to make that clear as well. That's a good reminder. And there's a spot that they can select modification of existing projects.
I do like the idea that you made that fillable. Hopefully that will be easier process for you.
In past years, I've set up, for lack of anything better, office hours where people, elected officials and firm heads, or those responsible for the offices and filling out the applications could meet with me. I figure with this tool, it should be easier. There's not questions on where things should go. And those are not built into the timeframe this year, but I'll be glad to answer. Everyone knows I'm available to have any questions.
Here's my own thought on conference. November 18th is when, through December 7th. Were you saying people would work on, submit on the 7th?
They would be due Tuesday, December 7th. That's a very...
Okay. Um, November 18th, 19th is when we are meeting on our internal applications for the rescue plans. I don't know if we will end up having final decisions then. So I'm wondering if some department heads might find themselves in a little bit of a bind there. There are some things that CIP might, might have applications in for the rescue plans. I'm just wondering if that might make it a little... I, we're not going to know until we get into looking at the applications. When we're going to make final decisions, and I'm also presuming that we'll make final decisions in official board meetings.
Maybe, maybe there can be some instruction added to just have them say, an ARPA application has been turned in for this project.
Yeah, that's, they may, I just know that, that they can flag under the, on the form, there's a, where they, they discuss where the budget implications are, where the funding will be, they can put, select other and just flag as ARPA request.
Yeah.
I can build on to instructions.
So, yeah, it may be that they'll be doing some additional work, but I don't know how to get, I don't know how we get by that right now. And probably whatever's present for the ARPA request can quite easily be put into this format anyway. So as long as we're flagging them, that's, that's good.
But it sounds like a good point. We need to think about that. Did you, or could you send us a calendar request for the 15th? Oh, I see. Yeah, okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
You did, yes.
That's...
It's Wednesday afternoon.
Yeah.
Yeah. Pulling up quickly.
Yes. Having a question, any other question?
I'm on.
So let's do discussion and consideration.
I would move approval of the capital improvements plan process and timeframe as presented. Enforce.
Second. Been moved in seconded, Basil.
Aye.
Markin.
Aye.
Helen. Aye. It looks likely you have states up here, and we have a discussion of consideration for 16 years, 2022, Story County Economic Development Group.
Um, yeah, again, I put this together in a memo for the board. It looked, should look rather familiar as all three of you were in attendance with, at the Story County Economic Development Group meeting. Six?
I was not.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I had another, I had another meeting that they...
I'll retract that. Um, so six communities submitted for funding through the Story County Economic Development Group. The bylaws of that group specify that a community has to be an eligible community. And in this case, all the communities are members of the Story County Economic Development Group. Were eligible and able to submit applications. As I said, of those eligible six submitted applications, the maximum that a community can submit for is for $2,500. Five of the six communities did submit at that maximum level. Roland is the only one that submitted a lower amount at $2,000. So it was really interesting as these applications were coming in, five of the six fall into the category signage. We've never had that level of consistency in the project applications for the time I've been doing this. But in addition, in total, the project applications amounted to $14,500 as is spelled out in the bylaws and operating principles for the Story County Economic Development Group. Up to 15% of the funding that's allocated by the Board of Supervisors, which totals $110,000. That 15% totals $16,500. That may go towards project applications. So this fall, does the, the amounts that were submitted does fall under that cap. So the group decided to fund all the requests of the total amount requested. And then the remaining $2,000 gets reallocated into the allocation for you. And so that is the second sheet that shows the financials for fiscal year 20, should be, fiscal year 2022. Um, are there any questions?
I think I have a question. If they're awarded the money for their project, so how do they draw down those dollars?
Um, it will come in, in the springtime. The audit office will send them. It's not a reimbursal program like the SAW grant program and everything is. It's just they're awarded the funding, they receive the funding. And then earlier on your agenda, I mean, consent agenda portion, you have in the annual report, they'll, they'll demonstrate or respond to it, to requests from you later this fiscal year on have they used all the monies? If not, do they intend to carry over? And they maintain that carryover in their individual accounts, in their community's accounts. So it doesn't get returned to the county. But they do have to account for how they're going to use that if it's carried over. And that the same is true for the annual allocations, too, not just project ones.
I move approval of FY 2022 fund for the Story County Economic Development Group as presented.
Second. Been moved in seconded, Markin.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Helen. Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Bert, thanks.
I've not seen Jody. Your departmental reports. With higher than young, their departmental reports.
That was quick.
Good morning, Bill.
Good morning, board.
Good morning.
62 degrees today. I put, I took the moms out of one garage and put them outside so they can have some light, but I don't think that was a smart thing to do. Um, I won't let you look at this yet, so thanks for all you do. Joe Quaker, Story County Conservation, IRVM, IRVM. I'm going to have to take my glasses off because I'm fogging up. Let's see, last time I was in here was mid-August. I think we were ramping up for our harvest. We're getting through spray season. Our brush contractors had just wrapped up a little bit, which they did a great job. I didn't get any complaints from the, from anyone. Some comments and some questions, but no, nothing crazy happened, and they covered the top tier of the county and down the north, northeastern second tier, a couple townships. So they're done with that, but we'll just keep moving on to staffing. So we had this position open for quite a while, and we finally got somebody in for, for 16 hours a week. And she'd already worked for us at Hickory Grove, an Iowa State student, so she's still helping out. Her name's Reagan. She'll probably be able to put a few more hours in as Thanksgiving break and Christmas break. She can come help do some tree removal. Nick, our 40-hour-a-week person that we hired about a month ago, good for him, bad for us. He did get a full-time job at Odessa Wildlife Unit, working for the Iowa Department of Natural Resources. So it's always kind of nice to see these young people who go to college, get a degree in this field, and work so hard in seasonal positions and move around and finally get a full-time job. So anyway, I don't think we're going to fill that position. We're getting late enough in the year. I think Reagan, Tyler, and I can, can help with other, the road department, some of the other conservation staff. We can keep things going. So our seed harvest went pretty well. The, the new combine, the 1979 John Deere 4400 blew a head gasket. I don't know if you knew that, but what do you do? So we still, it's still out there. We're going to put it on a low boy and get it inside somewhere and work on it over the winter. But in the meantime, the old Alice Chommer Model 72s kept clicking through. And we, as you, you see the report, we weighed everything up, about 2,500 pounds of bulk seed. That will go into this week to get tested at a lab in Wisconsin. So what we do is we take a couple ounces of each area in a bag, label it, send it off, and they do a purity test. And that's how much chaff or inert material compared to seed. And I'm guessing 20%. Sometimes it's less, sometimes it's more. It was a pretty good year, so 20%. And I'll report back on what it really is. And then what we also, what we do is before we harvest, we go out and we look and we see what plants we have the most. What seed are we going to get the most of? So we grab a lot of the, you know, we grab about 100 seeds or more of each plant, about 10. And we have those tested for starch. Starch means it has the ability to grow. It's a full seed, and not will grow, but it has the ability to grow. It's called a TZ test. So we'll get all that done, and I'll report back, and, and that helps us guess on what, how much to put out, the rate, what we have to buy to supplement. So without that, you know, kind of guessing too much. So this kind of dials it in. We did have two public seed harvests. It went fairly well. We had good weather. About 22 different species were collected, not just at those two public events, but Story County Conservation with Brandon and Erica, they have volunteers that harvest. We have sites set up for them to harvest, and that seed all comes to us. And we, we clean it throughout the winter when we get time, when it rains, it snows. So anyway, that's about the seed harvest. Drilling equipment rental. I really need to thank the board. I do this every time I think, the supporting this. Not a lot of counties do this. We get calls... Not a lot of counties do this. We get calls from all other counties all over about, hey, can we rent your equipment? I'm like, well, you know, um, Keyahuck County is probably a little too far to drive one of our drills, but I may be able to hook you up with another conservation organization down there that has a drill. Uh, but you know, certainly Marshall, Harden, all these counties around here on the border, if their projects are close by, it really does help, you know, as far as a tree planter and prairie seed drills and all that. And doing waterways, uh, you know, these landowner and operators. It's a good thing to get some of these conservation practices on the ground and it helps take some of the guesswork out of, you know, a landowner doesn't really know how to grow a prairie. They know how to grow grass and corn and soybeans, but the prairie can be kind of scary. And it's expensive, right? So when they talk to me, I just say, don't worry. Um, we'll get, we'll help you out. So it's, it's a good program. And, um, you can't really seed through the, uh, NRCS, National Resource Conservation Service, they have guidelines. And so you don't really want to start planting prairie until it gets cold. Because it's a dormant seeding, you don't want it to germinate and grow and then die because of the frost. So as of the 15th, now we're starting to rent our drills out and they're getting some seed put in because a lot of the programs were halted because of the drought. So, and it's a good thing because we didn't get a lot of rain in this stretch, as you know, uh, from like my, from, from Nevada, Highway 30 to Zering area was really, really dry. Um, you guys know that. So, um, we worked on the budget, not going to say much there. That went in, uh, to Mike and Mary Ann and the Conservation Board will look at that next month and then go to you guys and we'll hash that out. Um, Conservation Corps of Iowa, are you, you guys, are you aware of what the Conservation Corps of Iowa is? So, um, I don't really know. I'll just say they've been around for about 13 years. Um, and they're out for hire. So there's a group, they come in like, in, in, in teams of four to five. They're based out of Jester Park in Des Moines, in, at Polk County, because they have room for them. They were out of veins. And so they're a crew that funded through a lot of different agencies. Um, and you, and Story County Conservation along with other, uh, the state, the feds, uh, you know, Neil Smith hires them out, the federal people, the state, the county to help do brush work. So they come, or they can do anything, construction, they can build bridges, stairs. So they come into the group in a big truck or two trucks and a trailer with all their stuff for 10 hours a day. Um, and there's usually five or six of them. And so Story County Conservation does budget a couple weeks worth um, for that. And they help us do a lot of work, typically where we can't get our equipment. So, um, on side hills and prairies where we can't, you know, they're, they can get around a little better. Um, take five people out there with chainsaws, they get a lot of done. This year, when I bring it up, is we had a supporter of conservation, uh, that here in Story County donate four days to IRVM. And, and conservation. So we worked on, at Wakefield Woods, which is a park on the corner of, uh, North.
Dakota and.
Dayton.
Dayton.
Dayton and E29. So it's, it's, the ratio really hit that thing hard. And it's beautiful oak trees, but a lot of invasive. So they went in there and if you drive by, you're gonna see piles of brush and all this stuff that we still need to burn and kind of haul out. They went in there and cleaned that up for us. Um, and the other thing is they put in a day on the prairie rail trail, uh, trying to get so many invasive plants off that because it's a really neat prairie granite. So, thanks to Conservation Corps of Iowa. Um, moving on, Drainage District Maintenance, uh, brush pile cleanup, we're gonna cut some trees on Grant V. And we are gonna try something new this year. We're gonna do basal bark, uh, which is going up to a smaller tree and spraying the stem during the winter with a special product that just kills the tree on, on, as it stands. Now, you don't want to do this on a big tree because it's gonna fall into the ditch. But smaller trees, it's a pretty effective way to do it. As versus cutting it, you can just go up and spray it. Um, so we're gonna try that method. A lot of other places do that. We're gonna give it a shot. So, 36 work orders, probably not that many today. Nick and Tyler are seeding right now somewhere over by Zering. Um, following Darren's crew as they clean out bridges, areas and clean outs and do some stuff like that. We're seeding every day we can. It's a little tricky with the high wind, with the hydro seeder, blows the mulch around. Um, but you know, you gotta go when you gotta go. So, yeah, and we, we have, we also have some, uh, some seeding to do. You may get some questions on R38 where the county pulled some shoulders up. So we're gonna try to get those done before the winter, get some, uh, some shoulders brass put in, not prairie, more low growing stuff. Um, fescue, it's the F-word, sorry, but we do plant fescue. Not everything's prairie. Um, fall and winter projects, maybe we can get some burning done. Uh, let's hope. Uh, and I'll talk about that with this. Tell Phase Three, we still have some seeding to do on the bike trail that goes kind of cattywampus by Iowa State and then along to 60th. We got most of that done. Again, the drought kind of hindered it. Um, you don't want to put a lot of this expensive seed down if it's not going to grow. So now we're gonna, we're gonna hit that. Um, Kestrel, the American Kestrel. Our smallest Falcon and I in North America, we need to put some of those poles up. We tried this summer, but the ground was so hard, our order didn't work. We went about a foot down and that was it. So we need to get the skid steer and do some, you know, a little bit bigger equipment. We just haven't got that far yet. Um, maintenance repair on equipment, our website, we're working with Erica with that and our IRVM long-range plan is due to be revamped, upgraded. That has to be done through recommendations through the Iowa Department of Transportation in order for us to receive the Living Roadway Trust Fund money, which is a part of REAP, which brings me to the show and tell. So, uh, last round of grants, you know, I get equipment and get trailers, we get hydro seeders, mowers. I really can't bring that in to you guys, but today in the mail or yesterday, Wildland Fire. Did you see the folks wear this out west on TV? Um, this is special gear. We call it Nomex. But when I looked at the label inside the pants, nothing on here says Nomex. It's just all kinds of different material. These are actually not fire retardant, but you know, they have, they're not going to catch fire as much as cotton or polyester or blue jeans. So this is, um, actually, I'll just read this Wildland firefighting protective garment meets three requirements of FNFPA, which is National Fire Protective Association, developed in late 1800s. I looked that up. Um, and standard or protective clothing and equipment for wildland firefighting. So this is our, this is what we wear. This is in our uh, safety handbook protocol for Story County Conservation. Those of us that are certified in S130 and S190, which were a couple of basic classes of Wildland Fire, have to have that. We have to have the pants, sturdy work boots and a shirt. Um, so, and a, and a helmet, brush helmet. Sometimes when you're in the woods, uh, or burning timber, something might fall on your head. Or for me, if you trip and, you know, bang, bang my head. But one thing I wanted to mention was, these are also brush pants. So a lot of times when you're out fighting fire, you might catch a log on fire displaying there. You want to cut it and throw it back into the black so it doesn't smolder all night and then catch something else. So these actually have uh, material in it that is not, it's not cut resistant, but it does, if you nip the leg, it blows out little fibers and will fog up the chain on the chainsaw. So what may be a, cut your leg off is just some stitches. Can I say that in public meeting?
Wow.
But this is, this is standard. That's what you wear. So it's kind of neat stuff, not cheap. Um, and this was all funded along with this Kestrel, which I was laying around thinking about this thing. And I brought one of these in when the ordering was downstairs. And Fred Matisse and Jane Halliburton were on the board. And I think Fred took it and was blowing hot air through it and making fun and stuff. It, it, it brought a lot of laughter. So it's a, it's a, uh, device that that was 6.3 miles an hour. So it checks the wind. Um, it checks the humidity, max wind, average wind, wind chill, relative humidity in here is 31.8%. Um, temperature is 69.4 degrees, dew point and all that other stuff. So this is what we write down. When we burn, we have a sheet that, you know, cover our tracks and make sure that we're professional and write all this stuff down before we light a fire. So this is called a Kestrel. Um, and this was all funded through the Living Roadway Trust Fund, not 100%, but 80, 80% funded. So, oh, um, yeah, there you have it. I kind of went through some stuff pretty quick. If you have questions, go for it. I'll try to hear you. I have a hard time hearing through a mask, but.
I, I have, I have a question. The, um, basal bark small trees that you're gonna be spraying. So last night we had a drainage ditch meeting and talked a lot about, uh, beavers and having to make sure that you get all of that material out. What happens? Do you go back in and, and take those trees out?
So did you, did you say cedar trees? No.
I, I.
You just said trees. Okay. So this would be for small stuff, like, um, typically, no, we would not. We wouldn't be, we would not be basal barking anything 10 feet or higher. So basically, uh, you're talking a stem like this, it's gonna crumple down over time. It's gonna, the snow, it's gonna die and just kind of disintegrate and fall on the ground and not.
Oh, okay.
No. So, um, typically, we would not go in, uh, and remove anything we would basal bark. It's just for smaller stuff. The bigger stuff, you wouldn't want to do that too because it would be, die on, you can't, you can't kill them that way. Other utility people do. Um, but it would just fall over into the, into the ditch. And then you'd have a blockage and that's not what they're asking. So this is for, I should clear that, yeah, smaller stuff.
Another issue about Grant V. We had a meeting last night. We approved the cleanout of the open ditch. And you've got cutting sporadic trees on Grant V.
Uh.
Is that gonna be, are you talking open ditch there?
Well.
You might want to check with Scott.
Sure.
And see what, because Kent Brody, our drainage engineer, is gonna be putting out specs.
Okay.
For bid on that project. So to make sure that you're not.
Right.
Overlooking something that's, that's gonna be done by the drainage district.
I, I, I will. I know what you're talking about. I think this is not in that area, but these are some of the other trees that have kind of gotten away from us. Uh, when we went in and clear cut, now some of them re-sprouted. Uh, but we want to make sure that we're not cutting and then, oh, hey, look, it just got dug out or vice versa. So, okay.
Right, right. That was part of our conversation was the number of beavers and really trying to clear through that area out.
Okay.
That's a lot, Joe.
Hey, you're welcome. Thank you.
You got a lot going on. We're not having, for you and Tyler and Reagan.
And Reagan, it's three of us. Well, Nick's here till the ninth.
So I have one other question. Sorry. So the Conservation Corps that helps you out, is that something that, that can future-wise happen again or?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, uh, they're based out of Minnesota. Um, they started about 13 or 14 years ago. Um, they have, they're having a hard time filling all the crews. So I think there's three or four crews in Iowa. Um, and I will just give you more information, all three of you. I, I didn't really plan on talking and then I'm, I'm looking at it and like, if you didn't know about CCI, you should because they really do help us out. They helped Mike's staff out a ton and Brandon. They did a lot of work at Jeanette Property. Um, you know, two weeks worth of five people a day can do a lot of work.
So, yeah.
And they help our staff out. We're, we're maintaining the normal stuff. These guys go out and do above and beyond.
Thanks. Great. Thanks.
All right.
Thanks, Joe.
You bet.
All right. At the report, upcoming agenda items. I know that I will have, uh, the CICS 28E will be, I think, next week. I'm working with Prell on it. I think that will be coming up. Anything else?
I don't think so. I think we move forward on the rescue plan applications. We'll probably be doing some of those, those on the agendas as we're ready to make decisions, but, um, I don't think I have anything else for it.
Yeah, and actually I will have one of those. There will be some forums for that opioid settlement. I think if you want information, they just got some. Yesterday, it was emailing with our county attorney on that as well. So that will be something else that I will. I don't believe I still see me went from the Bridge House on. So we'll go on to public forum number two, comments from the public. Items not on this agenda. The board may not take any action on the, on the comments due to our requirements of the meeting slot, but may do so in the future. Open up for public comment. If you're on Zoom, please use the raise hand function and we'll unmute you. I'm not seeing anyone do that. So we will close public forum number two. Ladies and gentlemen, any meeting updates and announcements. Fraser, Hazel won't start. Sure. So we've got second tier campus this afternoon. I have SOHA, CB, IT Department representation tomorrow morning. Um, and I've got new employee orientation at nine and then again at two tomorrow. Is that? We're gonna cancel. She said it out with this one. Okay, canceling the math now. Okay, okay. Um, and then a discussion, uh, ready to chat here with the United Way tomorrow. Department of Electoral Division Thursday, collaboration Thursday afternoon. Oh, Drainage District meeting tomorrow night. And then I have Central Iowa Detention and Iowa Council on Homelessness at exactly the same time on Friday. Decat Friday afternoon and then ARPA discussions. Yeah, that covers it.
One of the same things. Tomorrow morning, Amy Shonan and I are going to Boone County, talk supervisors there about the Ames or the French Plan. Since Ames' 2040 Plan is kind of going into Boone County in terms of development, we're gonna send me these chats with them about that. I have a story come, a board meeting at the large event Ames on the afternoon and then the Drainage District meeting, um, five to one in the evening. Circle meeting Thursday morning, I believe, but also, um, some kind of meeting on the headquarters of South. It's our board meeting, so I'm not gonna be in the circle meeting. We have one with headquarters, WMA. In the afternoon, we have department heads, like the officials meeting. Followed up with the 2040 visioning, um, plan running meeting in Nevada and Friday, the ARPA meeting in the afternoon.
Thank you. Yeah, I have multiple city, like, tier campuses this afternoon as well. IT representation tomorrow. I have CICS meeting tomorrow. As well normally would be on Thursday, but because we're having our department head meeting on Thursday, we moved it back to Wednesday. Thursday, I have actually two agent resources meeting. One, uh, is the personnel meeting. That's our regular board meeting. Department head meeting. And then Thursday night, I have Micah's annual board meeting. Friday has the AEDC board meeting at 7:00, 8:00 AM. I've got a couple of board of health interviews to do and then the ARPA meeting. We're all pretty busy this week. There anything else to discuss or? Volunteer motion to adjourn. So, second.
Hi.
Hazel.
Hi.
Seven five. We are adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.